... Plan and Commission Order, would you stand with me please? I'll lead the prayer. Richie lead the pledge. By women please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and the blessings and opportunities to come here and serve our fellow man. We pray what we do and what we say here today, Heavenly Father, will be in accordance with your will and we pray we'll be honest in everything we do. And we pray Heavenly Father, continue to pray for those that protect us at home and abroad and we continue to pray for our country. Heavenly Father, we pray that she may stand strength and be a strength in the world and continue to be strong as she has been. And we as individual citizens, Heavenly Father, do our part to keep her strong. And we pray that you just be in this meeting. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Call roll please ma'am.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Bowlen.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Bott.
Here.
Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
Present.
We have a call.
You have a call. All right, I'll entertain a motion on approval of our July 25 minutes please.
Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Do you have a second?
Second motion.
All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Doug, anything withdrawn or deferred?
No sir, nothing's been withdrawn or deferred.
Submitted for preliminary plat approval, Murrewood subdivision, section two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is Murrewood, section two, located off of Rucker Lane. Planning Commission members will recall about a year or so, maybe not quite that long ago, this application was brought to us. It was a zoning change. It came as a part of a planned residential development. You'll also recall that this is the same property that's currently under litigation with the city of Murfreesboro for the annexation of the property and then subsequent properties to the north. That lawsuit is still pending, has not been settled at this point, which is why it's coming before you today for review. The first section, if you recall, one of the original conditions was that the first section of the subdivision only allowed the development of 60 lots. However, within the last year, new ownership has purchased this and they came in and asked for that condition to be removed. So now they have, are proposing the next section of the development for section two. It does appear to be, preliminary, excuse me, appears to be consistent with the overall plan that was submitted as part of the plan development application. I will say that this is on city sewer with the city of Murfreesboro and as such, we'll have to go through their approval process with their planning commission as well. After reviewing the plat, we did have a number of comments. A lot of them were drainage related and I'll go ahead and turn the microphone over to Mr. Corbett for a discussion on that.
A little bit on background, the original development was by rolling and rolling. That entity has gone bankrupt. What we had to do on the bond on the roads, we got with the bonding company and we called that bond, so that'll take care of the roads and the drainage in the first section. Tennessee contractors, we went in, they bought, there were 63 lots to leave in this first section and I think that they bought 58 of the lots. So they're the ones that want to develop the second phase here. There was some drainage clogs that we had a little problem. It looked like water was going uphill a couple times, but basically had to do with some elevations which we worked out. The drainage now meets our requirements and also confirms, conforms to the master plan that they had, so it meets our requirements. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments, Stan?
No.
Questions?
Is there any plan to change the master plan? I notice this is probably section three or four that's gonna tie into Evergreen Farm back here at the back. That's some time down the road, but I feel sure, but we don't have any indication you're gonna change that because, you know, for fire protection and other things, it's always good to connect through the, so that's still the plan.
They have not indicated they're gonna change the plans that were originally, part of the original master plan.
Of course, that'll require the construction of a bridge over the creek, which is why, like you said, that's slated for a later section at this point, but eventually, the plan is to bridge that creek and connect with the subdivisions to the east.
Doug, do you recall when we did the initial limitation of the 60 lots? I've got it in my head that we did that because we felt like Rucker Lane needed to be improved and so we were waiting to see if that was gonna be annexed and it'd be part of the city's improvement plan, or was there some other reason that we limited it to the 60?
Well, you're correct. It had to do with the improvements to Rucker Lane. Now, since that time, the priority for Rucker has shifted a little bit. A lot of the reason of that is because of the Veterans Parkway that they constructed, you know, kind of gave another north-south connection in that area that didn't exist. So this, the Rucker Lane improvement was actually bumped a little bit. My understanding, if I remember correctly, that that's, the process for that should start in 2013, if I remember right. It's still on the city's plan to, their capital improvements plan. They have not taken it off. They've just kind of bumped it a little bit, but that was the big reason for that. But at the time, the Veterans Parkway wasn't constructed, so we think that that really handles a lot of the traffic that would've been taking Rucker at that time, now would be taking the Veterans Parkway, so.
Okay, other questions? Any other questions?
What does that do to us getting in the middle of the lawsuit on the annexation deal? I mean, that...
This really has no effect on that. If this is ever settled, you know, the one further, there were two lawsuits, if you remember correctly, with those annexations. One of them was near the Brinkley Road, Manson Pike area. That one's been settled and that area is actually going to be brought into the city in October of this year. We've looked at a couple of smaller subdivisions. There was a section of Princeton Oaks, I believe it was, that part of it was in the city and part of it was in the county. We were still able to review plats as, you know, being that they were still under our jurisdiction. This doesn't, this won't really have any effect on that, especially since the city has to approve it because of the sewer, so.
Okay, other questions? What's your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do you have a second? Anybody more say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. On the plat, Rachel's place.
Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is Rachel's place. This is section two, phase two. It's for a total of 23 lots and 11.7 acres. We did review this plat. It does appear to be consistent with the preliminary plat that was originally approved for this development. There were a few comments that we had on here. A lot of them had to do with some of the road naming issues that we saw out there and a few other things, such more housekeeping type of changes, I would call them. They have made those changes. There were some issues with, again, some engineering issues and I'll turn that over to Mr. Corbett for discussion.
Again, I want to give you a little background information here, because this one's gonna turn out to be a little bit different. The original plan was developed by Melvin Haynes, who, it was in 2006. It was approved. He was working on the section. We had a couple extensions of his letter of credit. We received a request for the extension in October of '08. He was working with us. Went to the bank to get his letter, the bank immediately told him no, they wanted either full payment or the project. And he basically turned the project over to the bank. Bank was Mid-South and the bank auctioned off the lots. In the meantime, the letter of credit expired, so it left a situation where we can't get to the road top. All the roads done except for the final topping. So our lawyers are working with the bank's lawyers to try to figure out the best way to handle this. Mr. Jones bought this section, I believe, at the auction that they had, brought in for development. We'll say that through the years, we've worked with Mr. Jones on several projects. He's always been a very good person to deal with, good neighbor. But I told him at the time, when we did this, and he starts to put up his bond, because when you put, when you record the final plat, you have to put the bond for the road before you can record the plat, that I needed him to bond it either all the way to Morton Road or bond the topping off Loblawley back to Webb Road, because otherwise, otherwise he needs, before we can hook him into the county road system, he needs to be basically hooked to two roads that are in the county. The other roads in the subdivision are not in part of the county and because of the legal status, I don't know at what point they'll be there. So, in talking this over and conversations with the mayor and others, I need your help on this. I originally told Mr. Jones we could bond to Morton or go to Webb. We feel, in practice, while they're building these houses and selling stuff, the traffic, all the construction traffic will have to come off of Loblawley from Webb Road because Morton won't be built into a later section. So, in practice, we need for him basically to bond Loblawley back to Webb Road, but he didn't originally build that and his, their position is, is basically not our road. They could also bond to Morton Road. The bond to Loblawley is about 38, 39,000. So Morton's probably gonna run about 78,000 or 80,000, so it's a little higher up. But again, I need some assistance here in how you guys would like to have this bonded.
Now, Mr. Jones, all his development is section two, is that right?
That's correct.
Phase two?
That's right.
And the part that we're basically hung out to dry on is phase one?
That's correct.
And so, in essence, they're really, well, two separate, they're two separate developments.
That's correct.
Is he agreeable to your options?
Well...
I see Mr. Jones is in the audience out there today.
They're here to present their position. I don't, you know, I just needed to present to you what happened, what's going on and that you give me some guidance on how you want to do it.
Yes, sir. Would you like to speak?
Chairman, the applicant's preference would be to bond to Morton Road. Will Owen, design engineer, Griggs and Lonnie. The applicant's preference would be to bond to Morton Road. In the process, a construction entrance would be constructed from Morton Road to what's your, the section, phase two, what you're seeing in front of you. So that's understood, that we direct construction traffic through Morton Road. But that would be the preference.
Rather than bond Loblawley?
That would keep the construction traffic out of the way in front. There's finished houses all through section one, are there not?
Yeah, there is. There's probably 20, 25 houses.
Pretty much built out, isn't it? I mean, yeah.
You're talking about finishing a road out between lot 35 and 22, going from there to Morton Road then and having all your construction traffic and...
Yes, sir. What would be done is a construction entrance between lot 35 and Morton Road would be constructed and then we would bond the finished construction of that section of road with this, with this plat in front of you. That's what would be done.
That would at least keep the construction traffic out of that neighborhood.
This Loblawley is what kind of shape now?
It's in very good shape. They did a really good job on the project and then as Mr. Haynes, like, he went back to the bank expecting to get a letter of credit, extended. For some reason, they said, no, we're not gonna extend it and then just a few weeks, they held an auction and auctioned all the rest of it off.
Did you not say, if I didn't get my numbers backwards, that the bond to go to Morton Road's actually higher?
It's higher, right.
Than topping Loblawley? So they're actually going with the higher price bond?
That's correct. That's correct.
I think it's better for the neighborhood too than what's already built out there to take it through to Morton, so I think you're doing the right thing.
Okay, you have any more comments?
Unless you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I have questions?
Bill, did I understand you correctly to say that your preference though is Loblawley?
Our preference would be Loblawley. At the time, we talked about, we had not mentioned bringing the construction traffic from Morton. And our thinking was, because this is where the houses are, that's where the agents will have to come in, all the traffic, right now, all the construction for the new houses is coming through Loblawley and it would continue to add pressure on that road. Now, the way to market is, it may, you know, take them, they may build us out within a year or two, or maybe five, six years, before they actually got back here to doing Morton Road, so.
So if they built the construction entrance off Morton Road, would that be your preference then?
Well, again, as the commissioner pointed out, it would be a lot better for the, for the, for the community to have all that traffic come through there.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So if I'm understanding correctly, between lots 22 and 35, you're gonna basically extend Sweet Spire Drive to tie into Morton?
Yeah, and that's part of the original plan for the subdivision.
Right. But that will be their current construction entrance?
That's correct.
All right. Now, at what, who ultimately is responsible then for Loblawley at the end of the day?
Well, that's where we're in now. We're in a situation where our lawyer is working or talking to the lawyer of the bank, Mid-South Bank, on how we're gonna handle it. I don't have an answer for you on that one.
Would Josh like to comment on this?
Who owns, who owns the section one at Loblawley right now?
The bank.
Okay.
Individual property owners.
Does that go all the way to the middle usually?
Section one, I believe.
I think that should be clarified. Like on Murrewood, when they bought the lot, they didn't buy the roads. It was like, it was a meet and bounce things when the bank took it over. They took it over meet and bounce and they sold individual lots. The lots didn't go to the middle of the road. The road stayed with the bank.
The county hadn't accepted those roads yet, so they're still in between right at this point in time.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So normally, if this was a full-phase ownership, the developer would finish the roads?
That's correct.
Right. And now there's multiple owners and the lots have sold just the lots and not the road.
But with the construction needs to be coming off Morton, section two, to my opinion, looks like it stands on its own, you know?
That's right.
And, and we can't necessarily make them responsible for something that happened starting in '06.
And that's kind of, you know, that's what I'm caught in here.
Yeah.
So...
If you ask Josh if he has to... Josh, do you want to make any comments on this?
Uh, no. Is there not a bond?
The mayor, the mayor's got his hand up.
Yes, sir. That road, no.
Josh is not the attorney that's representing us in this particular difficulty.
Oh, okay. Okay. There's not a bond covering the file topic on section one of Rachel's place at this time.
Well, who, who will finally be responsible for these, for these roads in this section?
No.
The roads in the section in front of you, the applicant, the Jones Construction, would be fully responsible for bonding or finishing the construction to county standards. Correct.
Okay. To what degree are we going to build the road coming in from Morton Road? I mean, it'll be built according to a future plat and...
Yeah, it would follow the same route as, as the original plan was approved. It's up to them how far they build the construction. We will monitor it because the final road has to meet our requirements, so we'll know what, you know, what kind of rock...
Well, it'll be built according to all specs as to how far they go with it.
Right.
That's what they're gonna build.
To county, county specifications, where in, maybe in future time when this is finished, that the county can take those roads?
That's correct.
What about where it says future development, where Sweet Spire, Sweet Spire Drive is gonna go out to Morton? Who owns that land?
Uh, Mr. Jones owns that land.
Mr. Jones, so, okay, so he'll be back at some point in time...
Those will be a future section with more lots in there.
For the next phase and then, and they'll just finish their road out, just like any other subdivision.
Just gonna make a looping road go all the way through?
That's correct.
From one, okay.
I believe originally, when we approved and Will worked on it, there was not a connection to Morton Road and I believe the planning commission actually asked to put that commission, that connection in there to Morton Road.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I, I'm sorry. I need some clarification.
Yes, sir.
If, if a bank takes over property, how can they just sell off lots and not be responsible for the road?
That particular question's come up on several times. Our position is the bank should be responsible. Their position is they didn't start to develop it, so they're not in the developing business, therefore, they're not responsible for the road.
Well, then, when they sell the lots, shouldn't they also sell responsibility to the roads?
Again, that's a legal question that we're...
I think in essence is the letter of credit expired and that may be egg on our face for not, not calling that before it expired. When that expired, we basically had nothing to go back on.
That's correct.
Yes, sir, Mr. Boyd.
All of these are excellent questions that we wish, we wish we had the answer to. We do not. Banks have done various things, some different things. We have had one bank that actually foreclosed and sold the meets and bounds. They didn't choose to do this, but on this one, they just foreclosed and sold lots, which are not meets and bounds and which do not include these roads. So we don't know exactly where this is going, to be honest with you. This is a very difficult legal question and you're just gonna have to let us struggle through this. At the last stop, if the bank's not accountable, the county will be accountable for finishing these, this road, this final coat in phase one.
But the road is in good shape and it doesn't need any excavating work or ditches or anything, it just needs the final road to pavement.
Correct. It's, it's in good shape.
It's a lot worse than it is now.
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Any other questions? What's your wishes?
Well, I'm sorry. What, what exactly are we gonna vote, are we voting on now? Just, just to...
Yeah, when you, what I would appreciate is you vote on section one, section two, phase two here, which is the development. You would include in there language as to how you want me to bond it to an existing, you know, if Morton Road is your wishes, which is fine, you would just include that in your language, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make the motion to approve section two, Rachel's place, with the road to be bonded and built for construction traffic before construction begins to Morton Road.
All right, have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay. All favor of that motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Doug, site plan approval, Wilco Travel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Planning Commissioners are familiar with this site plan at this point. Just as a way of, just a quick review, this plan was originally brought to the planning commission back in June of 2010. The line, the layout of the property was, was different than, than what you're seeing today. There was a, a good amount more asphalt on the property connecting both areas. Since that time, they've made several changes to the plan. Excuse me, one of the more significant ones is creating a physical separation, removing a lot of the asphalt to help with stormwater requirements. Since that time, they, what had ended up happening, it had to come back to you for approval because it had lapsed, the original, the original approval had lapsed. Site plans in the county are good for 12 months after the original approval and they had gone beyond that. There's been quite a bit of discussion over the last couple of meetings. This, as you recall, has been deferred for the last couple of meetings regarding the possible connection between the two areas, the passenger vehicle area and the truck area. Also, some discussion about the possibility of putting maybe like an RV island or something like that in the truck area. And also, there were some stormwater questions that were brought up as well and some traffic questions regarding the Capital Way and Epsom Hill Road intersection. We've had a sit-down meeting with the city about a month or so ago about a lot of these issues. We've also had a separate sit-down meeting with the applicant and the applicant's design engineer. They are both present today to answer questions. Rather than go into anything at this point regarding the, the plan itself, I think it probably be a good idea to call up the applicant and his representatives to discuss some of these issues and the questions that the planning commission had, but I'll leave that to your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we do that? Okay, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Lynch and members of the commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, president of Huddleston Steel Engineering. It's been a pleasure of ours to work on this Wilco Travel Plaza. We've been working on it about a year and a half now. And also, Steve Williams is in the audience. He is president of Wilco Hess and we're here happy to answer any questions you may have. I understand there's been a lot of discussion in your last couple of meetings about a few issues and we'd like to talk about those with you today. One issue that has been brought up is the distance between our automobile access and Epsom Hill Road. As you, as you know, we have an automobile area in front of the Travel Plaza and then a truck area in the rear of the Travel Plaza. The distance that we have from that automobile access is 200 feet to Epsom Hill Road and that's a, that's a great distance. You don't normally see that on, on site plans, but we provided 200 feet, which allow three to four semi-trax trailers to stack up if necessary. Now, there is a front area for cars and a rear area for trucks. We do want to keep those separate. There's some things that go on in these Travel Plazas that, that we don't normally see. You know, Steve's developed 30, or owns 35 of these things, so, for example, there was talk of putting a RV hookup in the back, but he says, he says that's not a good thing to do. In fact, he's done it before and he's taken eight of those out, because what happens? You'll have mom or dad go inside to get whatever they need to get in the store and they'll leave the sun out there pumping gas and it's a liability question. I mean, we don't, we don't want people that are not used to hanging around semis to be back there, so that's why we've got that separated. There was, I think there was discussion about, well, does that make it hard for somebody with a trailer to turn around if they get in the front and don't have a place to really park? Well, if you'll notice, we've got 100 feet of pavement between the pumps and parking spaces and that will provide ample room for anybody with a trailer to turn around or places for them to park, but we did decide basically Friday that maybe we ought to add two or three spaces for somebody with a trailer. So what we proposed to add, you'll see on this sheet we're, we're handing out, is an addendum to the plan that shows three spaces where somebody with a trailer could park out front. You'll see it highlighted there on the page and hopefully you can match it to the front parking lot of your, of your drawing. One thing that was brought up at your last meeting, you know, we've addressed stormwater. We have detention and retention ponds. We also have a sweeper that will sweep the parking lot every day, but we do also have oil-water separators at our diesel pumps. I don't, I don't think that was brought to your attention at, at the last meeting, so we want to point out, we do have those oil-water separators at the, at the diesel pumps. The other item that's been discussed a lot is whether, whether to put a signal out there at Capital Way and Epsom Hill Road. We prepared a traffic study that we turned in on Friday. It's a, it's a brief memorandum. I'll be happy to let anybody look at it that needs to, but the bottom line is, we aren't close to warranting a signal at this location. Both the city and the state look at traffic, traffic signal warrants for either eight hours of the day or four hours of the day. And the idea is that when you have exiting vehicles, they need to reach a certain number, either for four or eight hours and that, and out on the main road, there has to be a certain level of traffic for those same four to eight hours. Well, in no way do we meet those warrants for our exiting traffic and even if we did, Epsom Hill Road doesn't have enough traffic to warrant a signal. In fact, it's, it's a lot lower than I thought it was and by sheer number wise, it's probably lower than you think. There's about 2,500 vehicles on Epsom Hill Road a day and to give you an idea, you'd have to multiply that by seven times, getting it up to 15,000 vehicles before you start looking at four lane in the road. So it's, it's a low traffic volume out there. I think it, it feels tight because there are trucks out there, so what we've got to do is make sure we provide the geometry whereby those trucks can, can maneuver and that's what we've done with this site plan. At this time, I'll stop with my presentation, be happy to answer any questions and Mr. Williams is here also.
You're calculating the truck traffic, the citizen traffic coming out on Capital Way as well as Epsom Hill Road traffic?
That's correct.
And it does not warrant?
It does not warrant it. We're looking at about 300 trucks a day using the rear of our site. You're looking at about 325 cars a day using the front of the site and 200 cars using the fast food. You know, at these Travel Plazas, you don't have the kind of fast food traffic that you would normally see at a standalone fast food center. When you, the fast food customers are, are also doing something else there. They're either gonna get gas or they're gonna go into the convenience store, so, so you don't have the, the sheer numbers at the fast food that you would at a standalone[1758.76] you don't have the, the sheer numbers at the fast food that you would at a standalone fast food.
Well, I'm just, I'm not a traffic engineer, and so we have to depend upon you for, for these answers.
Right.
You know, I'm just thinking, semis, we were talking about it last month and the month before, and whenever, you know, really, you're stacking about two, maybe a car or two in behind that, or in amongst them, whatever. It's a slower turnout, you know, coming out on Epsom Hill, and so you're talking about high-traffic-volume time, which should be morning and the afternoon, everybody going to work and everybody coming home. So that's the main part that we're hearing from the citizens out there, as well as, and the Commissioners are here too to make some comments, but that's the timeframe that we're really worried about, and it's not really of controlling the, the traffic there, it's just being able to let them out, let them in, let them out.
Right.
You know, and that's where we're seeing it's gonna hurt Wilco, as well as the residents that's living down the road.
Well, one thing you have with these travel centers, and, and we don't think about this either, because it's not something you normally see, it's not something we normally see, and we, we have to learn it from Mr. Williams. Most of their truck traffic leaves before the morning peak hour, because what they've got to do is get through Nashville, get through Chattanooga, Atlanta, before the rush hour, all right? So they're leaving before the morning peak.
I see. So afternoon peak is not a...
Afternoon peak is more spread out.
Okay.
Bill, afternoon peak, they're coming in, they're not leaving, they're coming in to park, shower, and eat, and sleep.
I don't know if you heard that, or we can get him up to the microphone, but what he said was the afternoon traffic's just coming in, they aren't leaving. So they're coming in to, to sleep, or, or shower, or eat, or whatever they need to do, but they don't normally leave when they come in in the afternoon peak.
And realistically, there's a truck stop across Epsom Hill and one across 24. This is gonna do a lot of robbing off them, and we may not be adding that many more trucks to Epsom Hill, we may just be spreading them out in a different direction.
My client's planning on it.
These, these numbers you, that you given on, on the cars and the number of trucks that are coming in and out, is that, if this approved, like day-one operation, or is this two, three months down the road, or how, does it build up?
The question is, day one, will it just be that many trips?
I wish, but not.
When was the last traffic study done?
Well, this, this traffic study we just did last week, and we're basing on numbers that the county provided us, Eric, I think those numbers were in the last year. We've also looked at the overall Epsom Hill Road within the last year as well. The state, the state numbers that we had are 2010 numbers. And we went ahead and looked at 2009, 2008, the traffic isn't growing very much out there.
Okay, Rhonda?
Yeah, Bill, I've never understood why we only have one car entrance and exit, because I, I just imagine if there's an accident there, disabled vehicle, emergency vehicle, it just seems counterintuitive that there wouldn't be some other way to get those people out of there.
We looked at one out on Epsom Hill Road and, and talked about having one at first, and I, I think it was the city more so than the county, said, no, we would rather your traffic be away from the interchange ramp, be at Capital Way, and so that's why we've separated it to there.
So even if it was something that, that wasn't used on a regular basis, whether it was gated or whatever, you wouldn't want to have an outlet through the back?
You talking about between the two?
Right. Because you've got two, you've got a, well, I imagine it'll be entrance and exit in the back section, but I mean, the, the people who come in the front, if something happens, they're just stuck.
Yeah, we, we don't want to mix that traffic between the front and the back, now a gated deal, I don't know if...
Well, what if you had a road connecting to, like Rhonda's saying, that do not enter on both ends of it for emergency use only?
I think, I think you're gonna have a hard time keeping people out of it unless you gate it.
I'd go down it.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have that anywhere?
No.
Any other question?
We, I'm Steve Williams, I'm Wilco Hess. We would ideally, if the city hadn't required us to do all the stacking for the drive-through, we would rather have the drive-through on the interstate side of our facility, because I heard, I was eavesdropping when y'all were talking about it, was gonna be a bottleneck with the drive-through. This is not the plan we'd like to have, we'd actually like it to be flipped. If any of y'all have gone down to Mont Eagle and seen our facility there, that's exactly what we'd like to build. Have any of y'all seen that? And, but, the, the difference is, this is not a typical peak hour for, you know, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. People come at all, all times of day, and they're, like Bill said, they stop and they're gonna do multiple tasks, whether it's eating, using the restroom, visiting the store, the restaurant, stretching their legs, sleeping, or whatever. So historically, we've had a, you know, a better area to park. The one thing you gotta remember is cars are smaller today than they were, and trucks are bigger today than they were. So we really try to separate those, because people aren't paying attention, they're on their cellphone, they're texting, looking at their email, and we think it's in the best interest of everybody, you know, not to have those two different type of vehicles in the same venue. If that's a prerequisite, yeah, I mean, we can make something work. Ideally, if we could ever get the city to agree to not require us to have 10, 10 cars in the queue for the drive-through. Our drive-through percentages are about 28%, and one of our travel centers at the most, that's the most highest percentage of any of our travel centers. The average fast food, I think, is what, about 70%? We can't get the city to understand that, so, we're still, we haven't finished working on that yet. Any other questions?
Any more questions?
Question for Doug. We talked about the possibility of asking them to bond for a traffic light if, if we, you know, let's say he got lucky and business was booming, and now we do have a traffic issue out there and, and trucks are stacking. Is that, I know it's a complicated issue, I know it's not something that we do routinely, I'm just curious, did you have time to even look at that or have a conversation about it?
To answer the question, I mean, we have that ability to do that, you know, this has come up before with other discussions that we've had about the possibility of escrow accounts and those kind of things. It's really just a matter of the finance department setting up account specifically for that, and then that money would go straight into that and would just hold until a future date. I think where it becomes a little more complicated is, it's not so much determining what the cost is gonna be, I think that's relatively easy to do, it's how do you break it out at that point? You know, we've got the, you know, this proposal here, we've had the Dollar General across the street, you know, the subdivision down the road, we're gonna, there's a couple developments existing already up on Capital Way, and then we'll be looking at another one here in just, in just a moment. How do you divvy up the cost? That, that's really where it becomes a little more complicated, and I don't necessarily have an answer for you for that, but the process is in, in and of itself can be done.
Capital Way across Epsom Hill's running in the raw land, there could be something else even bigger than this come over there, and are we gonna make these guys pay for the traffic light for them?
And can I comment? That could be a deal killer for us, because a year ago, it wasn't an issue, and if it doesn't warrant a turn lane, it's just a minor turn lane now, and then if I was required to spend money to put a, a traffic light and that ongoing cost, we won't develop the site. And I'm not threatening, it's just getting to the point where, you know, enough's enough, because those things cost, you know, $150,000, $200,000. And that makes a material difference in our desire to build in Murfreesboro.
Well, and that was one of the conversations that we actually had before, is we don't want to force you to put one in if it's not necessary, but we don't, you know...
But there's a cost to having a bond. They don't do them free.
Right, but you know, there's also a responsibility that we have to the citizens out there to make sure we've got, you know, good development.
I understand that, but it wasn't an issue a year ago, but now it's an issue now.
Seems like we're seeing a lot more in Epsom Hill. It's under the radar.
You got a Dollar General. I understand your point, but I want you to understand clearly my position.
Thanks.
Well, Mr. Huddleston said, and I respect him completely, that we're like seven times away from warranting a traffic light, so I don't know if we're, if we were at 85%, I'd be a lot more concerned, but if we're at 15% of the numbers it takes for a traffic light, then that, that's a long ways away.
Okay, another question? Rich?
Well, the, seeing actually the 200-foot is kinda helping me a, a little bit. One thing that the truck drivers will decide whether there's enough room to stack there. In other words, if that becomes a problem, I think they'll say, that's too hard to get in and out, I'm gonna go across the road, so if they're comfortable with saying that that's far enough stacking, I think we, it's, it's helped me out anyway.
Okay.
One thing, I really like the, y'all put in a space to park the longer trailers on that side, and I think that's a really good idea. You know, I'd like it a little better if you had maybe one more space and they were a little wider. If you're backing into a nine-foot space, it's, it's a little harder, but if you could do that. And that was my concern, somebody parking over here in the middle behind the gas pumps, and I think you got ample room to turn around back in right there, and I think that's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Robert Lewis, in the Planning Department for the city, they have submitted plans for the Wilco Truck Stop, for the Planning Commissioner or Planning Department to continue review this again, and the plans that they got in the other day, and we're gonna look at tomorrow, everything seems to be okay, with the exception of the first right turn in for the, for the first, for the cars. I think, I don't think it's shown on the site plan where there's some striping that needs to be done, is it to make a left turn to go into the other area? It's not really shown, but I was talking to Mr. Adelot and Ms. Logan this morning that they're gonna look at that this after, or the next time, that's tomorrow on the, on the plans review. So other than that, it seems to be okay, as far as the city goes.
You familiar with that, Bill?
I am, I have it on, I have it in red on that drawing, but I haven't gotten it to the drawing.
And just to follow up on Mr. Lewis's comments, what he's referring to, that's something we could, that would really qualify as a minor deviation, that wouldn't be something we'd have to bring back to, to you for your review, I think that's something we could handle in-house.
Okay, does anyone else have a question? Frank, do you, would you like to, if I can comment?
I think he, Mr. Huddleston's answered all of them. I, I was thinking myself, like some other people, maybe about a red light there, but the more you think about it, when you stop traffic, it may be worse. And the traffic moving itself, you know, a lot of time during the day, people be done gone on two, so we may make it worse if we put a light. They saying if we do have a problem, they, they have to have one, they'll come back and look at it, and look like the city's looking at it too, so I don't have no problem.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have, anything you'd like to say? Anybody else on the Planning Commission, any questions? Yes, sir.
I do like the idea of possibly adding another space there. I think that would help for, I know in situations where farmers possibly hauling a cattle that stopped there, maybe fill up, and that would give a little more room there to, to help bring those in there too. And I too like seeing that 200-foot mark there, it gives me a little more vision there to see what that space is there, and, and as we were talking about here, requiring a bond or whatever, I know whenever we require these bonds, that sits there, and that puts possibly an undue cost to a individual out here, that, that over time, it just sits there. I know there are some other places we have out here that have bonds on them, and said we're sitting there waiting till a highway's gotta be taken care of, and, and we're, and when we widen that highway, we're gonna put in a turn lane or whatever, and as way budget is going, a lot of places now, there may not be highways built for some of our lifetimes. And I just don't see where the bond, if, if we're gonna require something, you require it now, and I think possibly what we're seeing out there now, that we'd be possibly putting undue cost upon these individuals here, because who knows what's causing the traffic and what it is there, and it needs to be a shared situation, so I don't see where that's where it is, and I think our questions have been answered here today in what's going on.
Okay, all right. Anyone else?
Well, I like the idea of any development that's in the county, it's gonna have significant revenue, those tax dollars for the county, and they could just as easily move this down two exits and give all those tax dollars to Coffee County. And a, a fast food restaurant in, is not inside the city, I mean, it's valid, it's, they're few and far between, and we get the tax revenue off them.
Okay. You wanna make a motion?
I'd be happy to, based on some clarifications we heard today, and some discovery we heard today, I would like to make a motion to approve the site.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any comments before we go?
Can I make one?
With the, with the addition, if you would, of adding at least one more parking spot and perhaps widening a little bit?
What I would like, what I would like to see is, is like five 12-foot wide parking spaces, so that one takes six spaces, you're good with that, and we're good to go. It gives those trailers a little more room to back in.
That's, that, that would be my amended motion.
Somebody was skating back up too good.
Yeah.
All right, all favor of the motion say aye? All opposed, no?
Thank you.
Swaim Center.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you say, this is the Swaim Center, this is a new construction of about 9,200 square foot of office and dormitory space on two acres, located just a little further down the road on Capital Way from the site we were just looking at. Essentially what this facility is, it's a facility for first-time DUI offenders. This is kind of an alternate, an alternate sentencing program, rather than have to say, serve any jail time or anything like that, they can choose to serve their sentences out here. It's a overnight facility, typically over a weekend, something to that effect. The applicant is here that can discuss this in a little more detail than, and provide a little more detail about the facility than, than I can. This did have to, this did require a conditional use permit approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, that approval was secured at this, this past BZA meeting just a couple of weeks back. We have looked at this plan, again, this plan also is gonna be served by City Sewer from Murfreesboro, as such, will have to require Murfreesboro City approval from their Planning Commission as well, as far as I know, it's on their, their radar, and Mr. Lewis, I think, can speak more to that. We have made, again, we did make a number of comments, most of those comments have been addressed, I think there were some stormwater issues. Okay, and according to Mr. Corbett, those issues have were taken care of. There was also some concerns that CUD had with the facility, but they've also worked those issues out as well, so the site appears to be in good order. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Again, there are representatives from the Swaim Center present that can answer any of your questions.
Okay, does anyone have, have questions before we, before we ask them to come forward? Anybody have any question? All right, would the applicant come forward, please?
Chris Taylor, owner. Basically, this is alternative sentencing. If someone gets a DUI, reckless driving, and they're able to work, the attorney works with the judges and the DA, and not everyone is eligible for this, they pay for their own way, so rather than going to jail, serving their time in jail, they're able to come to this facility, there's education provided, they stay overnight, bring their own food, basically bring all their supplies and serve their time rather than serving in the jail, they're serving it here. It's a non-lock facility, they could leave at any time if they wanted to. The, the reason they stay is if they leave, they go directly to jail and lose their license for an additional period of time.
What's usually the amount of stage, just whatever the judge says?
Correct, 48 to 72 hours.
This is 100% DUIs, all non-violent offenders.
Correct, felonies, any, any individual that has a felony is, is not eligible. So these are...
If they have a previous felony, then they're not eligible too?
Correct, correct, and, and this is, you know, we don't determine who, who is allowed to come here, it's all done by the judges and the attorneys and the DA.
How many counties are you serving? Is this Rutherford County, or this statewide, or nationwide, or...
It's surrounding counties.
Do you have any of these facilities in other places?
No, this is the, the only one, there's been one, actually, partner and myself are buying this from Larry Swaim, Dr. Larry Swaim, he's been, he's run this in Smyrna for 17 years.
So you're just moving the same thing that's already operating there?
Correct, just, he's, he's looking to retire, so he's gonna basically be a consultant for us for the next three to five years, and we're bringing all his work staff with us.
What's your total occupancy?
It would be 40 would be maximum, so 20, 20, or 24 males, 16 females, and they are separated.
These are single-story dormitories?
Correct.
And are, are they individual rooms, or they multi?
Four, four people to a room.
Of course, we're looking at a site plan only, Doug, I mean, we're, we're asking questions, would be more tended toward zoning, but this is just a site plan, so we may be getting off track asking these questions, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think it just, you're just, I think you're just asking questions just to get an idea what the facility is, but, yeah, these questions were hashed over at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, and, and it was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, as far as I know, was unanimous, so...
Yeah, the group actually worked with the BZA to find a spot more suitable away from residential areas and things like that, because there was another side or two that was determined not to be the best fit for the community.
Correct, correct.
Since we're asking those kind of questions, what, what, what is your load that's gonna be reduced in our jail? I'm interested, man, that's, that's, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, the, you know, the...
For a year, what's your projected number?
You know, probably in 3,000 individuals coming through a year, so you can do the, the math there of, it's a significant savings to the county. Correct.
Site plan meets.
Yeah, Doug, does Doug have any comments on the dorm?
No, we worked with them in this detention area and the...
No, we worked with them in this detention area and, and the consent removal, it's been worked out, so it meets our requirement.
Still don't need a light down at Capital Way. Let's check.
Okay, any other questions?
I have one question. The, the parking, and I assume these people have somebody to bring them in and drop them off, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
You don't have a lot of parking for them. Parking is for employees then.
Correct.
I noticed there weren't a lot of spaces.
Yeah, we would, uh, actually like the spaces reduced even, even more, but, uh, we, we agreed with, uh, the city to...
Okay, any other questions? Motion? Got a second?
Second.
Got a second. All party members say aye? All opposed, no? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we get into our last item under staff reports, uh, you should have received a copy of a memo on your table for a plat extension. Uh, if you, uh, would find it, uh, acceptable to do so, we could have a suspension of the rules to consider this, uh, brief amendment. I'm sorry?
Mickey Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Nope, this has been the rules.
Second?
Second.
All party members say aye? All right. All opposed, no?
Thank you. Uh, this is for a plat extension for Davenport Station. Uh, this is a subdivision that was approved off of Shelbyville Highway. It's, it's on the west side of Shelbyville Highway, it's part of a larger plan development. Uh, they have submitted the preliminary plat for the first section. Nothing has ever been done out that way. The plat itself is actually, uh, good until, I think, October or November of this year, so they're a little ahead of the game, but, uh, I don't have any issue with bringing this up. Again, they, they haven't made any, there, there's nothing out there at this point, it's just the land's in the condition it was. They're just asking for, uh, an, uh, extension to their, to their original plat approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. You have a second?
Second.
All party members say aye? All opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on your tables, you should have a fairly short document called the, uh, the Rutherford County Zoning Ordinance. This is a draft, as you can see, uh, that we've been working on, uh, pretty diligently for the last several months. Uh, this is part of the project with the, uh, Parsons Brinkerhoff Consultant Team. Uh, this part of the process actually really been handled by Mr. Bill Terry, who's, uh, one of the members of the team. Uh, I'd like to thank him for the amount of work he's put into this, as well as our, our staff. Our, our staff has really been sitting down the last few weeks, going through the information that we've received from Mr. Terry. Uh, we've gone through two or three different, um, drafts, if you will, of, you know, him sending a section, us making comments, sending it back, him sending it back what he has, back and forth. Uh, what you're seeing here, uh, today is the, uh, the first finished product, if you will. Uh, what we think is, uh, is, is a good draft, uh, not that we don't expect there to be tweaks as we go, but, uh, again, I just would like to thank the, the consultant team for the work they've done, also for our, my staff, Ms. Elizabeth Emsley. She's, uh, the format that you're seeing in here is, uh, what she has, what she came up with, and I know this has kind of been a labor of love for her, uh, as she's, uh, put this together, but, uh, but I would like to, to, to call her out for that, and also for the rest of my staff, Mr. Eric Millen and Ms. Danielle Glauner, we've all put a lot of time and effort into this. Uh, I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of detail about this, but I did kinda wanna hit some of the high points of this, so with any luck, this will work. Hey, all right. Uh, the, of course, uh, this is, uh, introduction to the new regulations, our draft ordinance. First of all, does everybody have a copy of, everybody did this, okay? And did everybody get a copy of the, the slides that'll be up here? I think everybody should've gotten a copy of that as well. Can you turn off? Thanks. What I wanna talk about today is just to give a quick overview of the table of contents, give an overview of the major changes. Now, I mean, quite frankly, this document that you have before you is a complete overhaul for what, uh, what we currently have, but I'm not gonna go into the minutia, if you will, of all the different changes, I'm just gonna hit some of the high points, uh, give you an example of how this works a little bit. Uh, some of the sections that we have in here are actually pretty similar to what we currently have in our regulations, and just talk a little bit about some of the next steps and, uh, sections to review of this document. Uh, this is kind of an overview of the table of contents. Of course, most of this is, is fairly standard, I won't spend a whole lot of time talking about this. Uh, chapters four and eight are the district regulations. Uh, really, the, the real important ones are chapter two, uh, four and eight are, are pretty important. Uh, of course, the administration enforcement, legal status provisions, and we'll talk a little bit more about a couple of the appendix, uh, appendices, appendix B and C. We'll talk about those in a little more detail here in just a moment. Uh, some of an overview of the major changes. Uh, first of all, we're, we're proposing to have new zoning classifications. Uh, gone are the days when you're gonna see R-15, R-40, all that. What we're proposing in our residential sections, uh, we're proposing actually having an agricultural zone, which would be a five-acre minimum lot size, which would be similar to our definition of agriculture now. Uh, rather than having, and like I said, the R-15, the R-40, all that, we would break those down into RL, which would be our residential low density, which would be a one-acre minimum lot size. RM, which would be the, pretty much our R-15 now, would be our medium density, which would allow for 15,000 square foot minimum lot size. Uh, we also have our multifamily residential, uh, RMF, which is similar to what we have now, and also our mobile home park zoning designation as well, again, which is currently in our, our code. We're also proposing to add a couple of office and institutional zones. Uh, the OP is the Office Professional, which is meant to be kind of a transition zone between heavier commercial and residential areas. Institutional zones, uh, we identified that as a potential zone for things, uh, like community facilities, schools, uh, those kind of things, where they would be permitted by right. Uh, right now, all of our schools are in, uh, residential areas. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's limited in the fact that you don't see a lot of the heavier commercial type uses there, but you do see some of your larger institutional office-type uses in that zone.
Doug, how are you gonna decide who gets AR and RL? Is that gonna be a voluntary thing, or the, or the owner's gonna be notified, or they're just gonna be blanketly put in?
As far as the zoning map is concerned, that's the next step that we're gonna be working on. As far as the agricultural zone is concerned, we're thinking of that probably more as a voluntary, uh, type thing. There may be some folks out there who, uh, maybe have century farms or large agricultural estates that they don't wanna subdivide. Uh, if they would like to have their property re-sold agricultural, that would be fine. Uh, we're also proposing to try to, in, 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 probably not the best way to say it, but sweeten the deal in a sense. There's several farms out there that have, like, maybe corn mazes, those kind of things, where in the agricultural zone, we would allow those as a matter of right, whereas if they were in residential zones, they would have to go to the BZA every year to get approval for those things. So, that's, that's kind of how we're doing it, but...
Needs to be something, in my opinion, 'cause that's a pretty significant change, 'cause these farmers are basically sitting on development property, they may farm it for generations, but at this point in time, they can develop it in 15,000 lot foot lots, and, and there ought to be, it'd be voluntary or something to offset the impact, 'cause that's a huge impact.
Right, and we're also, we'll be using a comprehensive plan, the adopted future land use map, to assist us in that. Uh, of course, now, you know, that being said, uh, there's always the potential for zoning changes over time, uh, you know, just because...
If you went in agricultural now, and then 50 years from now, somebody wanted to put it back into residential low density or medium density, there would be that option of doing it.
Yes, yeah, there will be that option, yes, sir. Yeah, what you're gonna see here is not, is not permanent.
Right, though, it'd be, you'd have to come up and ask.
Right, exactly. And, and in that sense, I think that gives the planning commission and the board of commissioners a little more, um, overview and oversight, if you will, excuse me, of the development that's occurring. You know, one of the biggest challenges we've heard through this process, the fact that all these areas, some of them which probably should not be developed through units an acre, we really have no oversight over them because we allow it by right. This would help with that. You know, but again, we're, we're working on the zoning map now, so that, that, we'll be seeing that probably in October at this point, what we're looking at. Our commercial zones, you know, right now, we have like wholesale, or retail wholesale trade services, C2, those kind of things. What we're proposing to have is, uh, three commercial zones. Uh, we'd break them down, and these go in level of intensity. Commercial, neighborhood would be similar to, say, commercial, local in the city of Murfreesboro, that kind of, of, um, intensity. Commercial services would kind of be your in-between, uh, a little bit more, it would allow your neighborhood uses, but some of your larger commercial uses as well. A commercial general would kind of be the commercial highway equivalent, if you will, of the city of Murfreesboro. Most of your heavier, uh, type commercial uses would be allowed in the commercial general zone, but probably wouldn't be allowed in the other two.
Hey, Doug, how, how will you handle, like, home-based businesses, like, daycares in a neighborhood?
Uh, actually, that, that would, uh, be handled through our Board of Zoning Appeals as special exceptions, and I'll, uh, I'll, I'll kinda get into that here in, in a little bit. Uh, you know, home, actually, one of the, the home occupation section is one of the ones that we left unchanged, because we changed that just a few years ago, and it seems to be working out pretty well. We, we like the way that that's functioning. So, um, now, we are proposing to break out daycares as far as, be, using state definitions as far as the number, you know, if, if you're five to 12, I think it is, you can, you're considered a family or group daycare. Those would be allowed by special exception in the residential areas, but your larger daycares, you know, after that would require probably like institutional zoning, commercial, something like that, not necessarily in a residential type setting, so...
I'm just trying to imagine different ones, that, like, the small home-based businesses that have come to us, like, it was even like a little kennel or something, I think, where they were gonna live there on-site, as well as operate a kennel, you know, out of their house, so, would that be the same sort of thing?
Yeah, kennels, I don't think we allow as home-based businesses, 'cause those can, those have the potential to be a lot more disruptive. Uh, but, yeah, we do, we have seen those. And, and quite frankly, these are the kind of things that, uh, you know, we're hoping over the next month, that if you have questions about these things, you start jotting them down, and then, and, and not that I'm, I'm more than happy to answer them now, I'm not trying to say that, but, uh, but, but, you know, we know that there's gonna be questions. I mean, we're, we're, we're talking some pretty significant changes here, so, uh, we know there's gonna be questions, and we know we're gonna have to work through some of this, uh, so, but, but these are all great questions, and then I'm, I'm more than happy to answer them now, so...
I can just, to, to better understand, today, like, the, the Wilco truck stop, is that a, what is, what would that be classified as?
That would probably be classified under a, um, general retail trade category, and I'm gonna get into the different categories here in just a few minutes. It, it would be different than what you're seeing today. Basically, what, it would be classified under a particular use classification, and then they would be permitted by right in certain zones, maybe not in other zones, pop, perhaps special exception, and some terminology that I use, uh, the conditional use permit, as we know, it's gonna disappear and be called a special exception. It, it's really the same process, it's the same thing, it's just the state law actually uses special exception as the terminology as opposed to conditional use. So, it, it's really more of a matter of semantics, but, uh, special exception and conditional use pretty much mean, mean the same thing. But, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, I think, uh, a few slides from here, that'll help answer a couple of your questions you have on there. Uh, the light and heavy industrial, again, we're not gonna have the different zones that we have now, the transportation, construction, all those, we're just gonna lump them into either heavy or light industrial type uses. And then we had some, if you remember from the comprehensive plan, we actually identified some of the character areas. We had rural centers, uh, we had a couple of village neighborhood centers, and then we had employment centers and activity centers. We're proposing to have actual character areas, these would actually be mixed-use areas, where you would have, uh, the ability to do commercial and residential activity at the same time. Uh, we've broken those down into the three types. Now, employment and activity centers in the plan are actually separated out, but they're fairly similar in what they allow, so we felt it'd probably make more sense to just combine them into one center. Now, just, uh, just so you know, we probably are not going to see a lot of those on the zoning map at the start. Or, what we envision from staff standpoint is that, uh, it's probably not gonna, it's gonna take more study to figure out what's gonna be right in Milton versus what's gonna be right in Christiana, so to speak. So, what we envision over time is probably having separate character areas. We have an RC Christiana, an RC Milton, an RC Last Cassus, or something like that, where the requirements might be just a little bit different, but the framework itself is the same. So, we envision doing small area plans for some of those smaller communities, and then coming back over time, uh, with, uh, specific regulations for them at that time. But that just gives you an idea that the framework is in here for them, it's just, uh, we're probably not gonna see those on the, on the front end.
RC and the CN, kinda close, but not, 'cause of the commercial aspects of it, of, uh, maybe in retail or something?
Well, yeah, I, I think what you probably see is, uh, more of the, more of a mixed use, right, more of a mixed use ability in the rural center, the RC zone, uh, whereas we probably won't allow as much of the, uh, of the residential and the commercial neighborhood zones as you would say in the rural char, in the rural character area, the RC zone. This, those are, those last three are meant to be more of a, of a mixed use type character area, to kinda go along with what we already see out there in those areas, you know, there's a, a pretty significant mixture of uses in a lot of those smaller communities, which is why we feel that they deserve, uh, a little more protection than, than just the typical commercial area, so...
Now, when we got through this, we overall, are you gonna decide what's what, whether it's commercial neighborhood or rural center, or?
Ultimately, ultimately, it'll be your decision. Ultimately, it'll be the Board of Commissioners with your recommendation. We are going to be working on the zoning map, kind of looking at the uses that are out there, what zones they fit best in, uh, and we will present that map to you. Uh, now, the plan is, is to have the map presented to you in October, just to show you what it is, and then have some community meetings after that, because we know there's gonna be questions from the community about, you know, "Why is this person's own this, and I'm zone that?" You know, there's gonna, there's, there's gonna be a lot of that, we understand that.
Will it be zoned by parcel? I mean, you gonna go down to the parcels and do it, or?
We'll have to, yes, sir.
Okay.
But, I mean, that'll be something that you'll make a recommendation, a, as will you will in the document, that'll be your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners will be the deciding factor at that point, so... But to start out, it'll probably be more of a staff function at that point, just to give you something to react to, and to give the people something to react to. You know, we don't anticipate, i- i- even this document, you know, what we have right here, while, you know, staff has gone over this, you know, a, a number of times, and at great length and detail, we realize that there's gonna be tweaks to it, you know? What we're seeing here is probably not the finished version of what's gonna be decided upon. Uh, one of the biggest changes, and we've alluded to this in the past, uh, some of the discussions we've had, is that the planning commission and the board of commissioners will no longer consider conditional use permit applications. Uh, that'll be something, again, that the, the name of the conditional use permit will be called special exception, those will be handled strictly by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, the only thing you'll be acting on are the actual zoning of the property. Now, you'll still do site plans and plats like we did today, that, that part doesn't change any, but as actual, the conditional use permits and everything, that's, will, uh, that'll be strictly with the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, that's for that small daycare, the guy that does taxes in his house, or something like that.
Right, well, y- you know, you use the example, the person that does taxes. Some businesses, depending on the intensity that they have, qualify as what are called minor home-based businesses. Uh, those are permitted by right, they're really accessory to the residential use. They, we have a little form that they fill out, we don't charge for it, it's really just so we have a record of it, that we know they're doing it. just so we have a record of it, that we know they're doing it, if we get a phone call, hey, I think someone's running a business, we can look at it, say, hey, yeah, they are, long as they're meeting the criteria, they're fine. Uh, now, some of the businesses that, you know, produce maybe more traffic and those kind of things in residential areas, though, like a barber shop or beauty salon, there are people that, that do that, uh, those do have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and, and currently do, but, uh, some businesses can be done by right.
Then, when they go to BZA, will they stay with the applicant then, and if the applicant ceases that business?
That bill, that ability will exist generally, conditional use permits, special exceptions, whatever you want to call them, typically want to run with the property, whereas if, and kind of what we like to, to say is, you know, if you're okay with one person doing it, you should be okay with the next person who comes in and wants to run it the exact same way. You know, that ability will exist to do it by applicant, you know, if they want to make it expire upon sale of the property, that's something I know we've talked about in here and with the BZA, that can kind of, that can be problematic from our standpoint because we don't always know when property sells, so it, it's hard to say exactly when, when something expires, because we, a lot of times, we just don't know. But, uh, that, that ability, I guess to answer your question, will exist, yes, but from a planning standpoint and from staff's preference, again, if it's going to be one of those where you're okay approving it today, then the approval shouldn't change just because the property transfers and somebody wants to use it in that exact same manner. Now, if somebody wants to expand their use, I think that's a little different, but if they're operating under the same parameters, then there should be no reason to make it expire.
Yeah, and the daycare is what comes to mind to me, because somebody that's in the neighborhood that everyone knows, and they're keeping five kids in their neighborhood, and then somebody else buys their house and they want to bump it up to 12, and no one's living there, to me, it's a different use then.
Right, well, yeah, if nobody's living on the property and it's just being used, that, that ceases to be a family or group daycare at that point. I, I believe that there's actually, and I'd have to verify this, but I think part of the requirement is that, you know, if you're going to run out of your home, you know, that, that's part of it, not to mention if it's a home.
It has to remain the home.
Right, and these don't, those aren't technically home-based businesses in the ordinance sense, because they're regulated a little bit differently, but, you know, they, those still have to meet state requirements, and if they're not living there, to me, that becomes more of a daycare center that, uh, you know, should be, uh, probably in more of a commercial or office area, so. Okay. Uh, one of the, and we'll start talking about the, the land use activity table, Appendix B. In the back of your, uh, document, you'll see a fold-out page, looks like this, and it's, it's on both pages, it's, uh, front and back. This, what's the, called the land use activity table, you'll see the activity classifications on the left-hand side, then you'll see the zoning classifications across the top, and you'll see it written, you'll see either an N, a P, or an SE. Uh, the uses, they're either permitted by right, P, they're either permitted by special exception, again, or conditional use, which is the SE, or they're just not permitted at all, which is the, the N. Now, closely associated with that is the land use classification index, which is the next appendix, starts right after Appendix C. I'm sorry, right after, right after that chart, Appendix B. What you'll see is, uh, you'll see different land uses and then what they're classified and their activity. So for an example, if you're looking for someone who wants to, and I'll show you an example of this in just a minute, but we'll just use a, a bank or something like that under B. Uh, somebody wants to put in a bank or some kind of like a credit union or something like that, that falls under what's called financial consultative and administrative services. So let me just kind of give an example of how that works. Well, actually, and, uh, a question that comes up, before I get to that, a question that comes up sometimes is, well, you know, there's, there's quite a, a number of uses in here, but there's really no list that you're ever going to find that's going to list every single use that we could ever think of. If there is a use that comes up that we can't find anything similar to it on this list, the Board of Zoning Appeals in this document has given the authority to rule on any unlisted uses. So if somebody comes in with something that we've just never heard of, it's a new type use, rather than try to classify it ourselves, we can take it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Board of Zoning Appeals can make that decision, and then from that point forward, anytime that use comes in, we'll know how to classify that use. So we, we do like that, we think that's a good addition to the, to the ordinance. But just to give you an idea of how the use classification works, the, when you look at that, that list, again, back in Appendix B, that chart, everything is classified under what's called an activity classification, that, if you're looking at the, uh, if you're looking at the table, that's like the dwelling townhome, administrative services, animal care, veterinary, all those uses on the left-hand side, that's the activity classification. No, I'm sorry, that's the permanent, the residential, commercial, excuse me. Below that, it's the activity type, which would be administrative services, again, that'd be the, uh, animal care, veterinary, consumer repair, that kind of thing, and then the specific uses under that, and just how, practically how that works. Uh, commercial activities is the big classification, okay, under, like, commercial activities. Under that, you'll see, one of them is general retail trade, and under general retail trade, you'll find specific uses like department stores, hardware stores, retail nurseries. This is just a, a brief example of, of, I mean, there, there are a lot more that falls under there than just those, but that kind of gives you an idea of how that works. Also, in another example, community facilities, that's a activity class, under that, you'll find community assembly, and then under community assembly, you'll find like civic associations and religious facilities, you know, that just kind of gives you kind of a breakdown on, on how that, how that works, just to kind of a more of a, of a pictorial example there to, to help you out with that. Is everybody?
Is this where churches would fall?
Yes. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about churches, uh, in a little more detail, but yeah, to answer your question, yes, that's exactly where churches would fall, they're going to put them, we're putting them all under community assembly uses now. Does anybody have any questions about that? This is not something that you'll probably have to deal with a whole lot, this is really something that staff will be doing when people come to us and ask us about things, but I'm going to kind of walk you through just a couple of examples of how this will work. So a developer comes in, we've talked about banks, but a developer comes in, requests allowable zones to construct a bank. So, excuse me, step one, you consult Appendix C, which is that land use index, to determine how the use is classified. So we flip open to Appendix C, you'll find this is just a portion of that chart, and you'll see banking and bank-related functions falls under the financial consultative and administrative services. From that point, we consult the, the, the chart, Appendix B, which is the land use activity table, to, to figure out what zones that's allowed in. Now, I've kind of just done a kind of quick, uh, copy paste there, just to show you what that looks like. Financial, consultative, and administrative services, according to the document, can be placed by right in the office professional, the commercial neighborhood services, commercial general, both industrial zones, and then the, uh, special character areas as well. So at that point, the developer knows, this is where I can put this type of a facility. If the property is zoned correctly, obviously no rezoning is required, they consult Chapter 11, which is where you'll find the site plan requirements. Again, that's not something you'll, you'll look at the site plan, of course, come to the Planning Commission, but, um, you know, we'll be handling the administrative part of it as far as the process and, and whatnot. Now, if the property is not zoned correctly, the rezoning is required. Now, something to keep in mind, you know, we're, the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, at this point, they're used to a lot of the, you know, the conditional use permits, you have the rezoning, but no permitted uses, only a specific use is permitted by conditional use permit, okay, that is going to change, because basically, when you rezone a piece of property, let's just say, commercial neighborhood, you're allowing, you're basically saying, okay, yeah, we're going to zone this such a way that you can do your financial consultative or certain, your, your bank, but you'll also be able to do whatever else in that zone that's permitted by right. So if something comes in, if the bank doesn't work or something, and something else wants to come into that area, if it's permitted by right on this chart, it will not be coming back to you for zoning approval, okay? It'll just follow through the normal procedure as far as if they require a site plan to making any additions, those kind of things, but that, that's going to be different than, than what you currently do today. And I know, we, again, we've been alluding to that more, uh, as, as time has gone on, but just to, to let you know that when you approve a zoning change, that it's not going to just be for the use that they're proposing, it'll be for whatever uses are permitted in that zone. So you'll want to, of course, be careful with that, you know, just determine what is the best use for that area and, you know, what would be the most appropriate zoning classification for that, so. That's just a quick example, and there, I have a second example here, this deals more with a special exception, uh, talking about a childcare home, as a matter of fact. Uh, applicant requests permission to operate a, a group childcare in the RM zone, which is the residential middle density, which is basically our R-15 today. Again, step one, you'd want to consult Appendix C to find out how the use is classified. You see at the bottom there, childcare homes, family or group, fall under the personal and group care facilities, um, activity classification, or a type classification, excuse me. Step two, you consult Appendix B to find out where you're allowed to do that. Now, we already know she's in the RM zone, so she's allowed to do it by special exception in the RM zone, that means she goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Step three, you consult Chapter 14 for special exception requirements, and I'm not going to go over these, but we do have specific requirements for group and family childcare homes, uh, that they have to follow. And then step four, the normal BZA requirements from Chapter 14 are followed. Is everybody following along, am I going too fast, everybody okay?
So it has to meet the requirements far as special exception before it can even be considered?
Correct.
If they want to have that in agriculture zone, it wouldn't even be an option on the table for the BZA or anybody.
Right, and, oops.
Whereas now?
Well, they could do special exception, yeah.
No, it's only in, I saw one said, no, that's just in the...
Well, yeah, the heavy and light industrial area, we didn't think.
Wouldn't be a good fit anyway.
Right. So, but, but yes, you're right, uh, you know, they would have to meet those criteria.
I saw on this chart, there, there, a lot of things have a lot of ends, which they ought to have, but, but right now, we've caught, it got, BZA's got a wide open range of, of approving things, and this would give them more of a roadmap to where they ought to be.
That's correct. I mean, we, the, the BZA does have, there are some specific standards for daycares, and I think actually what we've got in here pretty much follows what we currently have. So there are, there are some uses that currently do have additional, uh, criteria. What we've tried to do in this document is to provide criteria for the different classes, everything that says SE in here, we've tried to provide some sort of, of guidelines for them to, to go by. Some of them may not be very detailed, but, uh, you know, at least they've got something to, to go by at that point, so you're correct. Uh, let's see here. Okay, going back to the major, the overview of major changes, uh, if you look at page 1158, and, uh, something we have changed in this document is the way we've numbered them, uh, every chapter, like, chapter, if, if the page is 1158, like in this case, that means Chapter 11, page 58, that'll help us in the future as far as if we make any amendments, we don't have to renumber the whole document, we can just renumber the section that we're in. But, uh, again, I'm not going to go into just a whole lot of detail about this, but we are proposing to put in performance standards into the document. We'd have standards for noise, vibration, smoke, gas dust, particulate matter, odors, toxic matter, glare, electromagnetic interference, and radioactive materials. Again, some of these may not be very detailed, you know, like, there, there's more on the sound than there is for a few of the others, but, uh, again, this is something that we currently don't have in our code today, and we felt that this is something that would be beneficial to have in our code. But again, I'm not going to go with just any major detail onto this. Uh, some of the, uh, the, some of the, I guess some of the most discussion, most of the discussion we've had regarding some of the changes that we've had, have been dealing with religious facilities. Of course, right now, religious facilities, churches, whatnot, are all classified, uh, as by matter of right in the R-15 and the residential districts. Uh, what we're proposing to do is take religious facilities and classify them as community assembly. Uh, you'll see a definition of community assembly in, on page two dash four. Basically, what we're going to do is break them down into three categories, and we're doing that by seating capacity. A small assembly area would be for fewer than 150 persons, medium assembly would be for anywhere from 150 to 500-person seating capacity, and then large would be anything over 500 seating capacity. There's different ways to do it, some places we've seen do it by square footage, uh, we felt it was probably better to, it'd be more consistent with what we've seen in our document, uh, you know, for group assemblies and things, we also use a, a, a number requirement, so we thought that'd be more appropriate for, for this.
This would be seating capacity in the major auditorium?
Yes, the sanctuary, wherever you want to call it, right, right, yeah, than the main assembly area, correct. And they're not going to be permitted by right in all zones, and just to give you, this is a, just a snapshot of the chart, the, um, the land use activity table in Appendix B. You'll see that in small, medium assembly, small, of course, are permitted pretty much by right across the board, except in the, uh, industrial, excuse me, areas, and, and in the EAC, since that's more of a employment activity center area, not so much residential, we felt it would probably be more appropriate by special exception in those zones. Your medium, we, they're permitted in a couple of zones, but, uh, primarily special exception across the board, you know, permitted by right in some of the commercial zones, not in the mobile home park area, that's really more specific for just the mobile home park, wouldn't be appropriate there. And then the large, you'll see, we really don't allow in the residential areas, and the institutional zones, the first place where it's, where the only place where it's permitted by right, which is part of the reason we created that zone, and then special exception in the commercial areas as well.
Now, if you had a church that was growing and, and they wanted to change it, they were small originally and agricultural, then they could come and ask for a rezoning into the institutional zone.
Yes, they could. Uh, yeah, and, you know, using your example, if they're going from a small to a medium capacity, they'd be required to have a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals at that point. Uh, and then, yeah, like you said, use your example, okay, we've, we're to the point now where we're looking to expand our capacity to 700 people, we would say, okay, at this point, you need to look at an institutional zone rezoning.
And that, then that would be possible.
Right, yes, it would. So that's just, again, and, and everything, I, like I said, you know, this, staff has gone through great lengths to try to make this all make sense, but we do realize that there may be tweaks to this, that includes the chart and anything else that you see in here, so we understand that there'll be discussion with this.
There still is the possibility of a church with a very small sanctuary, maybe 150 people, if you had a great big activity center or daycare, proposed daycare building or something aside, and you mentioned square footage, I would like to see at least a, a catch-all or something, if they're talking about tens of thousands of square feet or something, to at least be factored in, because you could have a small sanctuary yet a huge building, gymnasium or something that may not fit in the neighborhood, that may not fit with the character of the neighborhood, and I would hope we'd have some way to at least regulate that.
Okay.
At least something to think about.
Yeah, and, and again, th- these are the kind of things that we hope you'll take notes on as we go, and now, and we'll talk about in future steps, what, what we've got coming up. Uh, uh, again, we've seen it done differently, we've seen it done by seating capacity, we've seen it done by square footage, um...
If, a church with 150, 149 people in the sanctuary is permitted in all the classifications just about, or at least to, even there down to agriculture, but they could have a 25,000-foot gymnasium they're building beside it to have fundraisers and things like that, and I just would like to be able to...
Okay, well, again, well, that, that's something that I think needs more discussion, so, yeah, those are the kind of things we hope you make notes on, and we'll make notes of them too as we go on. Some of the unchanged sections in our zoning, our proposed zoning, you're seeing at, Chapter 9, our Plan Unit Development Regulations, uh, we overhauled those a few years back, uh, quite frankly, we've never had a use, a reason to actually use them at this point, uh, because of the economy, but, uh, we, we do think they're pretty workable, so, uh, and then when I say that they're unchanged, uh, I want you all to understand that we've, of course, we did have to make tweaks to it to make it fit in the ordinance, uh, especially like the sign regulations and our landscaping, which I don't think I mentioned on there, but landscaping is another one, that we had to tweak it to make it fit within the, within the document as far as the zones and, and everything, but the, the, the overall, uh, format of it really hasn't changed, and the content's pretty similar, but we, we did have to tweak some of these. Uh, our flood hazard area, our flood hazard districts, our floodplain floodways, of course, that's really a model that we get from the state and the federal government, so that really hasn't changed any. Our sign regulations, we just, uh, overhauled those about a year or so ago, so, if, if even that, so, uh, there was really no reg, uh, reason to, uh, again, we had to tweak it to make it fit with, with the new zoning classifications, but as far as the actual content, nothing's really changed. Our home-based business standards, uh, which are found in Chapters 11 and 14, uh, pretty much as is, with a couple little tweaks, and then our accessory dwelling unit standards, again, we, we, we changed those a few years back, and they seem to be operating pretty well, and we're, we're happy with those, so we left those the way they were too, and our landscaping. There's a few other things in there, like burrow pit regulations, those kind of things that, that we didn't change, but I didn't just list everything on there. So next steps. Uh, we'd like you to review the draft ordinance. Uh, now, I realize that, uh, you know, we're, we're talking about 250 pages worth of document here, uh, I know that, uh, schedules are tight and that it's going to be difficult for y'all to try to read every single page on here without falling asleep, quite frankly, but, uh, in absence of reading the whole document, and I promise we won't have a test or anything, but, uh, if you could pay particular attention to Chapter 2, which, uh, breaks down the different use classifications that we talked about, Chapter 3, which talks about the different districts that we talked about, uh, Chapter 11 goes over a lot of the supplementary regulations, uh, Appendices B through D, uh, those are what we looked at today, B and C being the land use activity table in the index, uh, Appendix D is the parking requirements. If you want to look at Appendix A, those are the definitions, I mean, by all means, if you've got questions, we'd be more than happy to, to answer those. Uh, we're going to be having a work session with the consultant on September 26, which is our next daytime Planning Commission meeting, so at that point, we'd like you to have, you know, if you have your questions or comments, I mean, if you have comment, I mean, feel free to give me a call, Elizabeth a call, uh, any of our planners, we've all pretty, been pretty involved in this, uh, quite frankly, so we should all be able to, to help you answer any question that you may have, but if you have questions between now and the meeting, please let us know, and we'll, we'll try to see what we can, how we can answer that. Uh, the zoning map, again, we talked...
Immediately.
I'm sorry?
That work session's immediately following.
Yes, what we'll do is, we'll have it on the agenda, but kind of like we do with some of our training, we'll adjourn, we'll adjourn the meeting, and then we'll just have our, our work session. Uh, we've invited the, uh, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, actually, uh, well, she was here, Mayo Taylor was here, yeah, but she, she led, and, uh, we invite our Board of Zoning Appeals too, because this is going to have a pretty big impact on them, even though they're not seeing the zoning changes and everything, uh, you know, there's going to be a lot more business, so to speak, heading their way for all the, the special exceptions and the criteria that they'll be looking at for that. Uh, the zoning map, we've talked a little bit about that today, our plan at this point, if you remember the, uh, the tentative timeframe that we gave you about a month or so ago, uh, we still propose to have that to you at the October night meeting, introduce it to you, and then immediately after that, start having some public meetings in the county like we did when we started the comprehensive plan. Example, like, uh, when we first had our focus group meetings, we had them out in, our open house meetings, we had them out in, um, oh goodness, we had them out in Last Cassis, Rockvale, uh, we had one at Bacannon, the old Bacannon School, we have one up in Smyrna at their, um, rec facility up there. We'll probably do something like that, uh, as well, and then we'll start having public